I would, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Lydia Laba, who lost her fifteen-month-old child.
Mary Montana?
Flag salute, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Trends, The Record, AIM West Milford, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, and Cable Vision of Warwick, and posted in the Administration Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Roll call, please, Mrs. Francisco.
Mr. Bailey. Mr. Dever.
Here.
Mr. Drew.
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Foodie.
President.
Mr. Huber.
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien. Mr. Robbins.
Here.
Mrs. Schultz.
Here.
Our executive session, session resolution, that the board go into executive session at 9:00 PM for approximately sixty minutes for the purpose of conducting a student hearing and discussing the superintendent search, personnel negotiations, and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such, such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable. Can I have a second, please?
No.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Rashika, the superintendent's report.
We have to oppose.
Oh, all in favor, sorry. Just looking at that.
Any opposed?
Any opposed? Don't think so. All right, Mr. Rashika, now the superintendent's report.
So what I'd like to do this evening is give you the HIB report. This is the mid-year report, so go back from July through the end of December, which gets submitted to the state. Was actually submitted on the twenty-ninth of January, maybe even the twenty-eighth. The total amount, and I'll give a breakdown, but the total amount of HIB investigations during that time period was eight. All eight were completed within a ten-day timeframe. Affirmed, or we call them substantiated, HIB reports by the board were two. And the total amount of training hours across the district for HIB for all the buildings was seventy-eight hours combined. Program hours, that means anything from our assembly programs for Week of Respect, Violence and Vandalism, Awareness Week, and all the other programs that we bring about to students' parents and the community, was a total of five hundred and fifteen point seventy-five hours. So almost five hundred and sixteen hours of programming that was brought. I want to give you a breakdown from your tool. This way you have a better understanding of what's happening. Actual was zero, nothing reported. Maple Road was also zero. Marshall Hill had one reported but unsubstantiated. Paradise Knoll, one reported, unsubstantiated. Upper Greenwood Lake School was zero. Westbrook School was also zero. McAppan School had two during that time period, both unsubstantiated. And the high school had four. Two were substantiated, two unsubstantiated. So that's what's on the report. Moving forward, we just have these two during this time period. Of course, you know, we have to get through the next half of the year. And this is, you know, for the past two years now, this has been required twice a year. It used to be the annual report, now we do a bi-annual report. I gave you all the information on the EBBRS component at the last meeting, and I promised that we have the HIB piece for today. So that's where we are with that. And on the same topic, I was very happy that last week we had, Melissa Strab was here, who did the assembly programs for all the schools except Westbrook, because she did a program at Westbrook, I believe, back in October. So there wasn't any sense in doing that. But we did have that presentation, and then there was a parent presentation on a weeknight last week as well. Very informative and good to have you here. So we want to keep moving in that direction, keep everybody informed. Better communication, that's one of the goals that we're working on. So that's good news. Now, not such good news I have to share with you is the fact that earlier today I received notice from one of, what about, well, I would say one of my favorite principals, I could say that. One of my favorite principals across the road from where I sit over at McAppan, Ms. Mary Reinhold handed me the dreadful letter of retirement. So we are going to miss Ms. Reinhold and sincerely wish you all the best with you and your husband and your daughter. She wrote a very nice letter to her staff today, so explaining her plans and how difficult it was. And you know what, McAppin's in a very good place.
Don't accept it.
Full of character. That's up to you guys. I didn't, I shouldn't bring the letter. I was going to hold it till I, to be honest, I was going to do it next week. But since Ms. Reinhold sent out the, an email to her entire staff, I said, "This is no longer a secret." So with that being said, we certainly want to wish Mary all the best. Okay? Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mary. Thanks.
Not only is it just a...
Enjoy.
And thank you for your hard work. We'll see you again. The other thing I brought in for everyone's was some discussion in the past on the 3D strategic plan, which was completed, I guess, back in 2014. I like using a strategic plan. I believe the board does too. But I don't think any of us really had enough time to sit down and look at this. So I make copies for everyone. Some of you might have them already. What I'm going to ask you to do over the next week or so, I know there's plenty of things going on, and we're looking at lots of things. But if you could just look at the first two goals out of the four and what the plans are. And what I'd like you to focus in on, so we can talk about it perhaps at the next meeting, is just the, look at the plans that were set for those goals, and let's kind of measure where we are, since this is put in place, and where we are now, what things we've accomplished. Because you'll be surprised, there are a number of spots there, a number of areas where you can actually check off, and these are things we've either been involved in or currently working on. So I think it's good. But I would start off with the first two goals. Certainly you want to look at all four, that's your prerogative. But I just wanted to share this. So thank you. If you have a chance to come in a week, just look through. And that's all I think I have for right now.
Tony, the dates on the HIB, when did, that reporting period, when did that end?
That, that ended December 31st. And then it has to go into the state on the, has to be into the state by January 29th.
Okay.
That's what we reported on.
Was that a full year?
No. Nine fifteen to December 31st, yeah. Okay. Special reports and correspondence, Mrs. Francisco.
Just for your, please note that the minutes from the January meetings, regular and special meetings, will be available for your review and consideration for next week.
Legal report, Mr. Roselli.
I have nothing to discuss in public.
Okay. Do you have anything to discuss?
I think we do.
Yeah? Okay. President's report. I have, as think as all board members have, received in their packet, a Relay for Life of the Highlands kickoff party Thursday, March 3rd, 2016, from 6:30 to 8:30 at the Grasshopper Irish Pub on Route 23. What can we expect to hear there? Learn about the Relay for Life of the Highlands. Enjoy complimentary appetizers, refreshment, and live music. And then for any more information, there's relay.hilandsnj@gmail or relayforlife.com/hilansnewjersey. Hope to see some board members there. I'm hoping that we can have another softball game this year where we kick the town council's butt. I'll be available, I'll be available this year.
Oh, I could hit a bat.
What, what's that?
I could hit a bat. Hit a ball with the bat.
I'm glad that Tony handed out our strategic plan. I was going to ask people this evening to take a look at it. We instituted the strategic plan in October 2014. We haven't had any review, and it's, it's important that we review it. With all the other things going on, this hasn't been high on my radar, but we, we need to, as a board, start reviewing this, looking at any progress we made, make any changes that need to be made in order to help us get where we need to be. The superintendent search has taken a little bit, just a little bit of our time. So I would hope that the, the board can start looking at this, and, and we can start working on that, because it's very important. We haven't had any discussion on it, which frankly is a shame. With that said, Mr. Dever, have, wanted to have a few words.
Yeah, I just wanted to start off real quick. Congratulations, Mr. Reinhold. As the CEO of McAppin Middle School, you did a stellar job, and you're going to be missed. So thank you very much. What I did want to mention to the public is, I want to let you guys know how hard everybody on this board is working on the superintendent search. It's one of the toughest jobs and only opportunity the nine board members get to hire a district, a senior district staff leader. I also wanted to say that the, say to the trustees, that compromise is not a dirty word. It doesn't mean we're settling for anything. Everyone approaches challenges in a different way, but I think we're all mindful of making the district, the kids in this district, the best they can be. I'm hoping, we're looking forward from here. I'm hoping that we can set aside any, any personal concerns. I know that I'm guilty of those myself, because I'm very passionate about what I do here. So that tends to come out of people when you're, when you're excited and concerned about making something better. Everybody has a little bit of type A on this board here. So hopefully tonight our mission, or one of our missions in executive session is to focus on getting a permanent superintendent in place for this district. So I hope we can all work together tonight, discuss things, hash out things, and get some, and get it done, for lack of better words. The last thing I wanted to mention, I spoke to Barbara earlier in the week about, Rodney had brought up a couple of board members, a couple of board meetings ago, having a top-ten list. And I did mention it to Barbara, we spoke about it. Getting a list together for high-dollar items, capital items. I haven't said a number, we haven't really hashed out the details of that, but it would be nice to have for the board members, for the public, you know, forward-looking, in view. These are things that may come up. They're not in, they may not be in the budget, but these are things we're considering and work being done on, or being done. Tonight I just, this wasn't part of my thing. I went to use the bathroom, and we have like three, three labs that are out. And there's ten in there, so that's about thirty percent. I know that they need to be, whatever, it's unlogged or fixed or whatever. But these are all little things that need to be talked about and cleaned up. And I know it's not the board's job to do that, but the board is conscious about how maintenance is performed and how our schools are, how the buildings are. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. Petitions and requests. Petitioners have requested to speak prior to the meeting. Will be first with five minutes for each petitioner for a period of thirty minutes. Then, time permitting, other petitions and requests, limited to five minutes per petitioner, will be allowed until the thirty-minute period transpires. Petitioners speaking during petitions and requests are asked to address topics listed for special action in the agenda. All speakers are asked to give their full name, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during petitions and requests. Barbara, were there anybody signed up to speak? No, is there, would anybody like to speak? Okay.
Seeing none, I'll have to close.
Thank you. Second. Thank you, Glenn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I move to adopt.
Second, okay. Thank you, Marilyn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Personnel, student affairs. Since Mrs. O'Brien is not here.
Want to carry that forward?
I was actually going to ask Mrs. Schultz if she'd carry that forward, Jamie, if that's, she's on the committee. Marilyn?
Move items one through fourteen under Personnel. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? I would, I would like, okay, Glenn?
I have a question. Number four, is that an aid for a problem bus?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Is that, is that in, number four?
Is it an aid for a special...
Is that an aid for a bus that has, having an issue?
It's for a special education, students.
Okay. To the board members, I'd like to point out, item number two, we're approving the appointment of Dr. Jonathan Esney, Supervisor of Special Services. So anybody who didn't notice that, I wanted them to be aware of that. Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call, vote, please. Glenn?
Yeah, I have a question, my number eleven. This is substitute building aid. Based on the salary you have down here, it looks like a part-time job, but it has benefits.
Because it's in combination with a current part-time position she currently has, so this is added on. If you look...
So that brings her up over the thirty, the thirty hours?
Thirty hours. It's just, it's back in, nine, ten, and eleven are connected. So one's going out, one's moving up, and now we need another spot to fill, so that's what happened.
And last question, number seven. That individual, was he previously here and let go?
He, he was here. That was on, not let go necessarily, but wasn't renewed because we were doing budget cuts. But the position became available, so then he did come back into the position listed in number six. But now he's moving into the history department once again to fill a position.
So he wasn't, he didn't leave for college?
No, no, no.
Yeah, okay.
Marilyn?
Under number six, the difference, change was from VA one to VA two?
Right. And that's basically because he was here last year at full-time, and we were waiting for the negotiations to finish, so we just held everybody. So that's what made that happen.
Thank you.
Any other questions by members of the board? Seeing none, roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Budget and finance. This time it says Mr. Drew.
I would like to move items one to four.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none?
Oh, wait, I do.
Okay.
Okay. Item number four, is that a sick day thing?
No, it's a litigation matter.
Okay. Thank you.
Glenn?
For what it's worth, in the future, before these come up on an agenda, I'd like to understand what it is in executive session before we go on. So I'd like to, I never mind, go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I'll just, I'm going to abstain from this when the vote comes.
Is that number four you're speaking?
Number four, yeah.
I believe that...
It was last year, we weren't here.
But I believe that...
We did speak about that. Real quick.
Wasn't the agreement on the board member page?
I believe it was. But I think, but I think we, no, it was before, it was last year, Glenn. And, but we, but we did speak about it at our last meeting, that we were settling it. And when we were in executive session, so. It was like a been there, done that kind of thing. It was fast.
And I did believe that we put the settlement agreement pre-earpiece.
Yeah. But I'll make sure in the, in the future.
Hopefully you don't have any.
Well. Okay, any, any other, any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes. Okay, now we're on to workshop discussion. Ms. Dwyer, that would be you. And if you have any report for the, the board?
I do, I have a, a report plus what I have to move forward.
Well, these are, these are for workshop discussion. These items, or there's nothing to vote on.
Okay.
But...
All right. Can I do my report first, then?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we met with the education, the education committee met on the 10th of February. We were very excited about Mr. Matt Loses' initiative to apply for a blue ribbon district for our school district. Very excited. Mr. Novak informed the committee that a group has been formed in the district that is studying the need for grade change. They'll be addressing the possibility of raising the failing grade to sixty-five. Currently, our district offers twenty-two AP courses. However, not all the courses run every year. For the 2016, 2017 school year, twenty courses are being offered. The education committee would like, would ask that the possibility of adding more AP courses be explored. There are currently 1,146 students enrolled in the high school and 537 students at McAppin. Approximately twenty percent of the students in the high school are enrolled in AP classes. The education committee would like our administration to investigate ways for more students to take these classes. The same goes for the twenty-eight percent of students taking honors classes at the high school. Honors and AP grade weights are one point higher than the B and C level courses. McAppin does offer some honors courses and a pre-AP seventh-grade history course. The committee would like to see a much-needed initiative at the middle school level in science and math. Despite the STEM lab, there's a need to increase other science classes as the history and English courses at McAppin have moved forward. Nineteen percent of the students in the eighth grade are taking honors classes. Again, the education committee would like the administration to investigate ways of encouraging more of our kids to take these classes. Mr. Novak stated that clusters have no impacts on grades, but we would like to know the purpose of the clusters. But perhaps that's a conversation for another time. The science supervisor came before the committee to request a B-level chemistry class. There will be no lab, according to him. However, the supervisor's paper proposal states hands-on, practical lab experience. According to Mr. Novak, there's a need for the class because of the new generation science standards. According to the science supervisor, there will be no additional cost for this class. Some discussion has begun regarding different types of scheduling at the middle and high school. The need for vocational education was introduced. There's a need, we feel there's a need to address the needs of all our students, so the committee would like to approach certified teachers and certified administrators to explore ways that our district can support vocational studies other than the limited courses currently being authored. And that's it for our meeting. Now, for discussion. The following agenda items are being presented for anticipated action at the regular meeting of February 23rd, 2016. Shall I read the, the music thing?
You don't have to read the music.
Okay. All right. Well, we have, March is Music in Our Schools Month. We also have Art Education. And we also have the play, Young Frankenstein, next weekend. I am so excited. You have no idea how hard these kids work, how wonderful the performances are, and they just deserve a little bit more than a pat on the back. They're really, really good. And what else do we have? We have art education. Any discussion on that? Any discussion on girls' track and field? Any discussion on boys' track and field? Okay. Special education, yes?
If you don't mind.
Go ahead.
With regard to the music in our schools...
Point of order. We need a person a second or to discuss workshop items? No?
No. No, this is just, this is for discussion right here.
Go ahead. Does, can you use the microphone? Oh.
Sorry.
I didn't think you needed one.
Thank you. With regard to both music in our schools and art, we know for a fact that the music education, the art education we offer in, in West Milford improves brain development, students' minds, opens their horizons for the future. And I think one of the things we ought to recognize is that West Milford schools do an outstanding job in this area, that we really all should be proud of this. And, and just thank you to the, to the teaching staff and the people who put this together. It's a great area to be well in, and, and I'm, I'm proud to be associated with the schools of what we do in these areas.
And just so you know, there will be, I'm sorry, there will be a performance of excerpts from the students in the musical here at our board meeting next Tuesday.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on any of the items?
Well, I just want to point out to the board that item number three, the addition of Solandra Restaurant, was because of Mr. Rashika. He's going to be taking the board there.
Oh.
So...
Let me get my calendar out.
Yes, look at Steve, huh? Not putting you on the spot too much, Tony.
After we attend a concert at Lincoln Center.
Okay.
That's okay. I love Lincoln.
I did see Mahler a second last week.
What, what field trip is that for?
It's a Spanish tour, but I expect they're going to the Met. And generally why this was put on here is that it's an annual trip. There is a restaurant that they typically go to that has changed hands. So they're just going, ban this one from the list.
Okay. Mr. Drew, budget and finance discussions.
Do I really need to discuss all these? The one that is, is the items two and three, we're going to complete work to make sure that we can use, we have usable area for STEM lab and middle school that I think is going to be very advantageous for the school district. The, we've got to do, fix the elevator school district. The, we've got to do, fix the elevator to be in compliance and help our disabled students. We're getting an absolutely great deal on the switch programming from Bergen County Technical Schools to move forward with wiring up all of our schools for wireless and the security that needs to go along with that. That could easily cost ten times that amount. So.
And I want to say thank you to B. Bars for arranging that. Glenn?
I just have a question on number five, or one question. What's the consulting for?
That's for the wireless services.
That is, that relate to that, okay.
Yep.
There's, there's programming that has to be done on the switches to meet our requirements and the redundancy. And that kind of programming, I can just tell you, is, those people are really highly paid, so we're getting people who are very knowledgeable, competent at this, and it's a fantastic way.
Well, I said consulting, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
So it's program. Hands-on consulting.
And, and teaching, if I remember correctly, B. Bars, right?
Yeah.
So, teaching our staff how to.
Our tech, our technology people.
Yeah.
How to utilize.
Frankly, the great deal on that is, is because of, you know, B. Bars and his knowledge and his connections that, you know, I mean, you're just absolutely, he commended it. We got to do it either way, and that's excellent.
Glenn?
Just one, one more thing, and, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time to bring it up, so if it's not, just say so. We have in here, we're soliciting requests for proposals on food service management companies. I'd also like to inquire about soliciting proposals for legal litigation services. I think we're supposed to do that periodically anyway. And we, as far as I know, we haven't done that.
It is, it is something that New Jersey School Boards says all boards should do every year, instead of just willy-nilly giving, giving contract. I, I would like, though, to have a brief discussion on that in executive session. So, when we, when we go to executive, we'll briefly talk about that. Mr. Dever?
I just wanted to add, we do like Joe, so. Is he changing, is he changing first?
He's not our litigation service.
Rodney, yes, sir.
Yes, item number four of the elevator. Just to get up to speed with this, this issue of the elevator, what is the, I have a few questions. What is the status of the elevator today? Is it actually working?
Yes, the work, it is working. We were having problems with the relays. What it needs is some type of overhaul. We've received proposals from Otis and Schindler along with Kenkor. Kenkor basically does our maintenance on our lifts and our elevators. And so, what Kenkor has proposed to do, and I can show you the proposals if you haven't seen them, is, is to give us new circuits, a new circuit board, without doing a lot of cosmetic changes that the other companies gave us proposal for. If we, we're hoping that this is going to be effective. If it's, if it's not, then we're going to need to get an engineer in, and we're going to have to go to bid to, to, to upgrade the entire car.
Okay, so is this a budgeted item?
No, it's not a budgeted item. We've had many problems with it since September. It's been down a number of times. Not only is it used for students and staff, our maintenance, our custodians also use it to bring stuff upstairs to the second floor. So, it's, it's a valuable piece of equipment. It's something that's needed in the high school. And for us to budget for something that we don't know is going to have a problem, you know, we've repaired it a number of times, but there's some more extensive repairs that need to be done.
Okay, so, so a new one is kind of like out of the question? Is that like four times as much, or?
The, the two proposals that we received from Otis and Schindler just to upgrade the operation and to do some cosmetic changes were triple the price, yeah.
And that was really the reason why I brought it up the last meeting about the top ten, because this, in my book, is much higher than the woodpecker problem that we have, you know, so it is a pretty costly item on this agenda, and I'm willing to support it.
I, I would like to point out to the board and people in the public and anybody who's watching, the elevator is over forty years old, with no major renovations done to it or repairs. It's been fixed, 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 the little things, and they're just, you know, you can put Band-Aids on stuff for just so long before you really have to get into the, replace the electronics and do that stuff, so.
Since the stall now is quite, quite steep?
Yep.
Does it really, are we going to get anything out of it? Is it going to break and, and add another?
I don't think that we know that. We don't know that. We've been repairing it since September. We've had to, we've had relay issues. It's been out of service for weeks at a time. Because it's old, it's difficult to get parts. Sometimes they have to be manufactured or.
Re-engineered.
Thank you, thank you. I didn't want to say Joey right there.
It may, it may be a situation where we may consider thinking about replacing.
But I think that, yeah.
This, this is the next best thing. We're replacing the guts, you're replacing the mechanical aspect, you're not just replacing the car and, and doing all that stuff, but we're replacing it to make it functional again.
So hopefully, this is going to be what, you know, give some service for the next few years at least, and see what happens.
And maybe my last question here on this elevator, is this the only school that has an elevator?
No, Westbrook also has one right here.
I, I would like to know, Barbara, we discussed it in committee, any warranty that they're going to give us?
I could check into it.
Okay. If we could do that before next Tuesday's meeting, that would be great. I'm sure they're going to give us something, but, yeah. Okay, Mr. Drew.
The others bids that we had, which were also not replacing it, but just more extensive repairs were, I believe, eighty-something thousand.
And a hundred and seven.
Over a hundred thousand.
Eighty and a hundred and seven.
Doing the whole car is way more than that. This was unanticipated. There was no reason to expect to put this in the budget last year, although anything that's this old, you sort of know you're going to have to do something sooner or later. It seems to me that, you know, we're going to replace the basic systems in this, so it ought to last a significant period of time. But if it doesn't, then we probably have to replace the whole thing. However, I will point out that Otis Elevator Number One is still in service. So, sometimes you can replace the mechanics and electronics and the, you know, the car and the cables and those kinds of things, still, still perfectly adequate.
Do you think, do you think that, look, we're investing in this elevator, that we can reuse if we had to replace the, with a new one, or it would be a, we would scrap the thirty-seven K?
If, if, if you went and replaced a new one, we'd probably be in that quarter million dollar range to, to redo it. That would be my guess. Putting everything in new. This, just replacing the, the mechanics of it, I, I think that, you know, hopefully, we can get another.
Among the things that are being done in, in this are the circuit board, and I think you know enough about computers to know that the circuit board is somewhat specific to the unit. So if we put a new one in, we couldn't use, you know, the old circuit board. And part of the problem is, is that, you know, there isn't a junkyard for elevators out there where we can go get a circuit board to fix this. It's got to be made.
I, I will check into if, you know, what they're giving us for a warranty. I can tell you, though, as Mr. Foodie said, the parts had to be made. The relays are not available. Everything is just too old. They don't manufacture it anymore.
All right, are we, any other questions on any of the budget finance items? Marilyn, you stepped in for Debbie. I'd ask you to step in again, if you don't mind.
There are eighteen items under personnel student affairs.
Are there any questions on any of these items?
Number nine?
Number nine.
Is that, is the fifty-seven, six-seventy the annual salary or a prorated salary?
That's prorated.
It's prorated.
It is actually prorated, because we've used that word before without it really.
Yeah.
No, no, that, that.
Oh, no, yeah. That's the total salary for the year.
Prorated on that.
All right, so we, we should really make motions to remove that. I know I should have done it under agenda, but.
Well, you don't need to make a motion. This is for next week, so the good news is, all it needs to say is that this, at the annual salary, seven comma, prorated, or something like that.
Yeah, so.
I know you're.
It needs to be reworded, yeah.
I thought it came up with the word that, that we were going to.
Well, it was, it's, it's actually correct in every other one in, in here. You didn't have it in anywhere else. It's just, this one was.
I think that that was also because this is a continuation of that extension of the motion, so I think they may have gone back to that motion.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's just, it's just a draw, a throwback here.
Terry?
I have a question on, on number eleven. Are these individuals certified? Have they had training? And if so, what is their training?
The training is the standard training that's part of the program under him. You have training for the specialist and for the coordinator, so they, they are part of that. What we're trying to do is, is build a better base of people that are available to investigate. So, we have multiple things going on at the same time. We don't have to push things off to the side. As I mentioned before, the goal is to try to have everything done within ten days. And at times, you know, you're dealing with multiple him cases, it becomes impossible, based on the amount of interviews you have to follow through with. So, these are the two for now. I think we're also, not listed yet, but I believe that we're also looking into including two other investigators to work at the Highlander Academy as well. So, and again, these are non, these are non-paid positions. These are people that are, are willing to take on this role, so.
Oh, wow, wow. Okay, thank you.
On, on, on number eleven, that's for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year. Online, we still are only identifying the two thousand fourteen, fifteen specialists, so that list might have changed.
Yeah, because I wrote that up with.
So, if we can, if we can look at that, Tony, and, and have it corrected. Okay. Any other discussion on any of the items in personnel? No? Thank you, Mrs. Schultz. Old business. Anything in old business? Marilyn?
Mrs. Francisco, did we, did you ever receive anything in writing regarding the bowling at.
No, the clerk said that she would try to get something to me this, this week.
Speaking of which.
Well, that, I think that would be under new business, wouldn't it?
While we discuss it, you could.
I, I think it's time, it's almost time to do the school calendar for next year. And because I'm retired and sometimes very bored, I sat down and went through a calendar year knowing that we do have a hundred eighty-four days for our kids and a hundred eighty-seven for our faculty. Is that correct? Hundred eighty-seven?
Eighty-three.
One eighty-three for our kids. Oh, so we let them out a day earlier.
Well, it's one eighty-one for the students' contact days or one eighty-one.
Okay.
Most of our staffs have one eighty-three with the professional development.
Okay, well, that's fine.
Plus, plus the professional.
So I worked out, um, I worked out, I, I worked up a calendar that would fit that. And I think I have a solution for that, where we could close the school on Election Day. So I would like, according to the administrator-supervisor's contract, to have the education committee sit down with them and go through this possibility to try to solve this problem.
And if, if we can alleviate the concern of the PK parents?
Yeah.
And it's not causing us anything?
I think I got it.
Let's do it, no brainer.
So if you gave the election day, so that would take one day off the calendar as far as, and we do have, you know, we had a tough morning this morning, obviously, but we have seven days that we also build in.
And there shouldn't, I, I think, I think five is plenty. And I kind of find it unfair, I have to tell you, I have to tell you, I kind of find it unfair for the whole district to be held hostage for project graduation. I think the district needs to move in another decor, uh, direction, perhaps project prom, where we need to get the kids back in school and, and they don't come back. You know, they go down the shore for a week. My own kids did it. They're guilty, but.
We did combat that somewhat last year.
Yeah, good.
With a different way.
But I'm just, that's just my opinion as a, as a board member.
With this year, I believe we only used one snow day, as we're on the topic. So there are six days out there, so the thought is, I already had somebody contact the venue to see if we could possibly move that date. But, and I believe it is possible, but part two is checking in with the vendors, the DJ, magician, whoever they have coming in, to see if they're available for those dates as well, for that date wherever we were to change it to. So, you know, that, that's something we need to look at. You know, we need to have some, some flexibility, I think is, is the way to do it. We certainly want to make sure that the, the students have something, and their parents have worked very, very hard at putting this together, but we should come up with a way to look at flexibility.
But I think, I think that calendar committee needs to meet with the board and with a parent, a parent and administration and supervisors, because they're all stakeholders.
It actually is, yeah, it was on there currently, is we have representatives from the administrative office, secretaries, there are supervisors, principals, and I believe there's the representation from the association as well.
Okay, but the contract.
They're supposed to do what the contract says that to do with the board.
The contract says that we should be involved, so, yeah, okay.
All right.
I, I, I want to thank you for being board and, and doing that, just for the parents at, at PK. And, and I hope you didn't jinx anything by saying that we're going to.
No, we're done with.
But you told. If it happens, I'm blaming you. But thank you, thank you, Terry. Anything else in old business? Anything? Nope? All right, like to make a motion to close old business?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, new business? Okay, Mr. Dever?
New business, you and I have discussed, and I just want to make the other board members aware, we've talked about this, having a policy of wellness review by the New Jersey School Board Association. Something I think, it's a free service. We pay for the services of New Jersey School Board Association.
Through our dues, yep.
Through our dues, so it's something that we can have done for free and just get this looked over by a, a second set of eyes, so to speak, and maybe we can streamline some of the policy, get rid of some of the old stuff, you know, shrink it down from the thousands of pages it is to less thousands of pages.
Okay, so are you making a motion, then?
No, you don't, you don't really need a motion for that. We already approve school boards to do this, so it's a free service they offer.
Do we do need to vote on it before I send that?
No, I, I think it's, this is the discussion that we have tonight, so if there's, I can imagine there would be, but if there was an opposition to it, that's the time to bring it out, and, you know, but otherwise, we don't need a motion to do it. It's just something that we should do.
Okay, all right.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, Mr. Drew?
I would think that individual recommendations of NJASBA to change our policies, we might have to know.
Well, of course.
Yes.
Ask them to review it.
It's a no, it's a no-brainer.
Depending on the revision, I'd like to see it as well, I mean, you know, so.
It's the first step in streamlining, getting things straightened out, that's what it is. That's what I'm standing on, so everybody's on board with.
While, while we're on this topic, I would just like to add, it wasn't listed in here as the, along with the committees last week, we also had a policy committee meeting, and the two policies that we focused in on was, one was for student grievances, if they want to appeal something, and we looked at that, and that is something we're putting together, and certainly we will review that again, and if it meets the requirements and the direction we want to move in, then that will have to go to the two hearings here. The other, the other topic that we're looking at is the transgender. Mr. Huber supplied one to me. I believe that's based out of New York State, I think it's pretty much.
That was the sample from New Jersey School Boards.
And so we have that one, and I also have two other, one coming from Strauss Esme, and one from another school district. So, comparing them, they're pretty close. I think, not that I think, it's, it's necessary, it's something that we need to address quickly, so we want to stay on top of those two policies and make sure we finish what we started. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Rodney, you have anything to say with regards to sending policy down for review? Any opposition to that?
No.
Okay. Mrs. Schultz?
No.
Okay. I will, I've already contacted New Jersey School Boards, Jean Harkness, I believe, is her name? And asked her what the procedure was, and she told me, so I, I'll, I'll send that email out tomorrow with a link to, um, to our website with the policy on it, and she said it would be anywhere from eight to ten weeks, that there's, uh, ten reviews ahead of us. So, yeah, no, it's not bad.
Considering the size of our policy book.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, okay, any other discussion in, in New Business? Seeing none, I, I need a motion to close. Thank you, Glenn. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Any opposed? Okay, we have petitions and requests. Petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first, with five minutes free petitioner for a period of thirty minutes, and then time permitting. Other petitions and requests limited to five minutes per petitioner will be allowed until the thirty-minute period transpires. All speakers are asked to give their full name, spell their last name, provide their address. Speakers may not use the name of, names of students during petitions and requests. Would anybody like to speak? No? Okay, need a motion to... Thank you, Marilyn. Thank you, Jamie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Devor, would you read the resolution for executive session and, and to discuss it, add in there to discuss attorney representation?
I'd like to make a motion at eight-thirty PM. We go into executive session for the purpose of conducting a student hearing discussing superintendent search personnel negotiations and matters of attorney-client privilege, along with attorney's representation.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Marilyn. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. We will, okay.
Before we, before we go into executive session, because of, uh, the recent announcement of Ms. Reinhold's, uh, retirement, I would like to ask her, Ms. Reinhold, where are you going on retirement?
I'm going to Disney World.
All right.
But she's leaving tomorrow. She is leaving tomorrow.
With the Battle Book, yes. So thank you to the board for approving that trip.
Please enjoy.
Thank you. So thanks for your cooperation. Thank you so much.
Not in that suit.
We are adjourned to executive session at...
Ten forty-six.
Ten forty-six. Thank you, Marilyn.
You're welcome.
Okay. Mr. Dever?
One, one quick thing. I'm proud of this board, but we still went over forty-seven minutes into overtime here at eleven, almost eleven o'clock at night, but we did good. Let's keep it on track, so maybe in the future we can actually hit the time goals of getting the pullock out, getting staff who have to drive hours, wherever they come from, and us, who have to get up early to go do our day jobs.
Do, do we need a motion to extend to eleven o'clock?
If you and Steve didn't talk so much, probably not early.
Yeah.
That is my fault, that is correct.
Forty-seven minutes and thirty seconds, smashing to a gun.
I called myself a mess bag.
Marilyn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
We're adjourned the meeting at ten forty-seven.
But it was, it was a very productive meeting.
Yes.